Ernie, Rose, we good?
We're ready for you.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular October meeting of the Concord Zoning Board of Adjustment. We will follow our usual procedure this evening, which is to say we will call the cases in the order in which they appear on the agenda. We will ask the appellant to come forward and be seated in the chairs to my right, be sworn in, and to identify his or herself, themselves. And there is a sign-in sheet, which is, this is something new. If you've been with us before, this is something we're asking you to do. Just jot down your name and the case number. The case numbers are listed there, in case you don't remember your case number. And we will ask you to then do your best to confine your testimony to 10 minutes. We will then ask the appellants to step down, and we will solicit testimony from anyone in the audience who is in favor of the appeal, and also anyone in the audience who is in opposition to the appeal. Following that, we'll check in with code enforcement to see if there's any input from their office on the case. And then, if there has been anything offered that appears to justify factual clarification, the appellant will have the opportunity to offer that clarification, not new arguments, prior to our closing, the public testimony portion of the hearing. Under most circumstances, the board will act on each case before moving on to the next. We do have one minor irregularity tonight. Is there anyone here from case 5721, 2022 Church Street? Is there anyone here representing that appellant?
Yes, we are.
We do not have five members to hear your case tonight, because I did not hear your original case, so I will have to recuse myself. We can hear your case as a four-member board. If we do, it still requires three people to vote in favor of any motion to carry, and the fact that it was a four-member board would not constitute grounds for a rehearing in the event that you were not happy with the results. Would you like to be heard by a four-member board, or would you prefer to recess and be heard by a five-member board?
You don't mind Peter Imzey's with us? He just stepped out for a minute. He'll be right back.
All right.
I confer with him and let you know when you have a break between cases or something, whatever.
That's quite all right. Sure. Absolutely.
I'm Matt Potter, by the way, and attorney.
Yes, good to see you again, Mr. Potter.
Thank you.
All right. In that case, we'll begin with the first case this evening, which is case 6021, Andrew H. Sullivan, Esquire, for Risi Malutis. The applicant wishes to expand an existing nonconforming food establishment use by installing a six-and-a-half-by-14.33-foot walk-in cooler and constructing a seven-foot-by-seven-foot alcove and conforming, and request a variance to Article 2884(c)(1), expansion of a nonconforming use, to allow the expansion of a nonconforming use by a combined net area of 122 square feet, plus or minus, which would be 35.6%, where such use is not permitted for property located at 192, 194 North State Street in a UT urban transitional district. Mr. Sullivan?
Good evening.
Good evening. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
I do. I don't see my clients here. They may be coming as I speak, but you described it very well. This is rather a unique property. I've never seen anything like it myself. It's, in the back is the little river that runs by it. There are two buildings on that lot. There's a house further north, and then there's this tiny little, I think it was a little hot dog stand or an ice cream stand.
It was a sub shop, I think.
Sub shop, then. And, what do they call it, the yellow submarine or something like that?
Yes, yep.
And the owner is the person that runs the gaslighter now. And just to give you a little background history, they were told by the owner of that building they got to leave, because they're going to do something else. So they looked around, and they could, to find something quickly, and they found this. Now, apparently, the owners of that building say, "Well, we don't really want you out yet," so they're still there at the gaslighter, but they want to open up this as a small, little bistrot-type thing. And it's so tiny, they had to put in a cooler in the back, which they did, didn't think they needed any permits. You can't see the cooler, you can't see anything from the street, but there is a little extension in the back. They took a portion out, and they added this cooler. The dimensions are in the packet, without knowing that they need a variance. So even though the cooler is, was it six-and-a-half feet by 14.3 feet, it does displace an additional amount of that size, because they took out a four-by-eight section. And then, in the front of the building, right there, that little yellow triangle, the two chairs are, they want to enclose that over the blacktop to create a little waiting area, because there's so much takeout these days. They don't, they want somebody to come in, it will be heated, but they'll have a spot where people can wait and get their takeout food. So the variance is requesting two things. Because it's over 10%, the building itself is tiny, it's only like 350 feet, and so the cooler, if we're calling that a building, it is partially enclosed. The rear wall is outside, but the sides are enclosed with the building, and it's butts right up. Plus that, that will be over 10% percent, and that's why we're going for a variance rather than a special exception. I went over, it's certainly a hardship, it's tough to use that for anything unless there's some better, excuse me, better way to have refrigeration and whatnot. It's a unique spot, it's a unique building. I've never seen anything like it, so, so small, and it's been there forever. And all he wants to do is add some square feet to make it more accommodating for heat plans, and more palatable to a customer base that he can provide more, and that they can, if it is inclement, whether they have a spot to kind of hang out dry, and in that case, and heat it. So I don't know, I haven't been to Concord for a while. Sometimes want me to read the whole five criteria, others, I've submitted my package as part of the record, whatever your pleasure, I'll go over, but I believe I go over the points in here. Again, the two variances we just discussed, the net footprint on a cooler is 61.15 feet, even though the cooler itself is 93.15, because it displaces a portion that had been taken out, so we're not adding the full 93 feet. The property, again, is isolated, it fronts a busy street, across the street from a cemetery. You can't, knowing, because so many trees around, you can't see anybody from the surrounding properties, you can't see the building. And there's that small river in the back. In special conditions, again, it's just 350 square feet, whatever, it's 352, is this too small really to do anything, these days, to have any type of, be able to prepare food, keep it in the refrigerator, and bring it back out and heat it up or whatever? And that's the need. It's not going to harm anybody, it's not going to damage anything, it's such a uniquely situated lot, it's just, it's going to fit in, because no one's going to even notice it. You can't see the cooler. If you close that little front there, it's going to seamlessly blend in with the front facade of the building anyways. Just get ample parking, so there's no, it's just those two spots in the building. It's not going to be public, it could have public interest, it's not going to appear to health or safety, general welfare for the public or the neighborhood. And I believe, you know, because it's so uniquely situated, there's no way around it except to accommodate, and it's a reasonable use. And it's a hardship because of the nature of the size of the building, the size is just so incredibly small. So I'm over for comments, questions?
Questions from the board? Nick, do you have any questions?
Well, the plot, we see two buildings. What's the other building?
There's a house there.
Okay. Anyone else with questions?
So, in your papers here, you talk about the second variance, but about a front enclosure variance?
Right. If you turn around, you see the square in the front? If you go back to the original facade, you can see, that's an open area now, right there?
Danger.
See the chairs?
Close it.
So they're just going to bring the front yellow facade over and cut in. It's approximately seven by seven, 49 square feet. So that area where the chairs are will be enclosed.
So that, so it's two variances, one for the cooler and one for that over there? Okay, got it.
Both dimensional.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who would like to be heard in opposition to it? Any comments from code enforcement?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
With that, we'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing. We have a request to add two small additions to an existing building. We heard testimony that the existing building is so small that even very small additions constitute a violation of the zoning because of the nonconforming pre-existing use. And we also heard testimony that the building really can't be very well used in the contemporary market for its purpose unless it is expanded. Ms. Specter Morgan, what do you think about it?
I don't have any issue with either of the variance requests. I think it is a unique building, and that it is so tiny that really any addition would require a variance. I understand that the goal in zoning is to reduce nonconformities to conformities as quickly as possible, but I don't really see this as an expansion of the nonconforming use. I see it more as a reconfiguration of the use that's already there. I don't think it's going to diminish surrounding property values. I think substantial justice is done by the granting of it, because there's really no gain to the public by denying the variance, and I don't think it's going to alter the essential character of the neighborhood, and therefore, it's consistent with the spirit of the ordinance and the public interest.
Yeah, I agree. It's obviously an extremely unique structure and lot.
I agree, and I do want to commend the applicant. The property is nicely cleaned up. I pass by it all the time, so they've done a great job of making it look very nice.
And I agree with my colleagues.
As do I. If ever there was an anomalous lot, this is it. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I move that we approve both requested variances for the reasons stated earlier.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous, both variances are granted.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
The next case is case 6121, Jonathan Hutchins, for Living Hope Community Church of Greater Concord. The applicant wishes to repair, replace an existing nonconforming entrance stairway, and to expand the nonconformity by constructing a connected 210-square-foot handicap access ramp, which will be situated five feet from the front property line, where 15 feet is required, the purpose of which is to assist those who need an alternate entrance option due to mobility impairments. The applicant requests variances to Article 2885(b)(1), which prohibits the enlargement of a nonconforming structure, and from Article 2841h Table of Dimensional Regulations, to allow the proposed ramp to be constructed within the front yard setback. Gentlemen, you swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
I do.
Would you identify yourselves to the record, and please don't forget to jot down your names on the sign-up sheet.
Jonathan Hutchins?
Yeah.
Gary Darby?
What would you like us to know?
Well, back in 2000, this was already requested and approved, and the church didn't have the money, and so recently it came on, and just a lot of repairs needed in the building, an old church in the Pinnacle community there. And in fact, we're painting it this week and trying to fix it up a little bit more. But, yeah, so we have some congregants that can't get in the church. There hasn't been a handicap ramp since 1900, so it wasn't built, and we're kind of, he's kind of crawling up the stairs, we're carrying them up. We have others that want to come to the church, would like to have access to the church. So we'd like to, we requested to put a handicap ramp in, but the city came out and said that we needed to request variance permission, because the current distance from the sidewalk is, there's not enough room there to put a ramp in, it's 15, it needs to be 15 feet. And the ramp that we would build that would be safe on the Summer Street side would be five foot from the sidewalk. So we're requesting, you know, that we build a nonconforming structure, and it be located five foot from the sidewalk, so people could get into the building, so.
Very good. Any questions from the board? I do have one question, which is, the answer to which is probably none of my business, but I'm going to ask it anyway. I did notice that the ramp that you designed does not conform to code as an accessible ramp. Did you know that?
How is it not conforming?
The pitch.
We were told that that pitch is a, I guess it's not set in stone that it has to be a one-to-one, that it can be as much as a one-and-a-half or one.
Well, that may well be true, I, I...
If I may, in conversation with them, the Chief Building Inspector Dario, really, it's not an ADA ramp, it's a convenience ramp.
Ah, okay.
There's our difference.
I need to put one of those in my portfolio.
Okay.
They are coming, yes.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Is there anyone who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Please come forward.
I don't know, I had to come forward.
Oh, yeah.
Simple guy.
It's very, very, very formal around here.
I don't go to this church.
Yeah, I swear you in.
Sure. My name is Darren Greenleaf. The whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Dan Greenley, you said?
Darren Greenleaf.
Darren Greenleaf. I got both names wrong.
Can I go to the church?
Yeah, I can do that. I go to the church right down the street, and it's really important to me to see that whatever they need, it gets to be done, you know? I did a sermon probably like a year, year and a half ago, and just north of the Merrimack County area to the south, there was 66 churches for sale, you know? I look at a penny to a hundred-dollar bill, and it says, "In God We Trust." So like I said, whatever those guys need, I'm in favor of it, and that's where I'm at.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Twist at the bottom? Nope, twist it.
Oh, twist it, okay.
Do you have a trick pen over there?
I just use my own. And that's all I have to say.
Very good. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to make sure that no one really opposed this. I mean, they're doing a good thing, and I'd hate to see it go to, go for sale, go to some kind of apartment, or who knows, even get, you know, torn down. So I'm just a concerned neighbor, I'm a butter, and I also have a property on Summer Street as well. I just want to make sure it gets done, so I'm hoping you guys will all consider this and whatever else they need.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? Any comments from code enforcement?
Yeah, just to let you know, the steps that are there, the existing steps, actually extend all the way out to the sidewalk, so the ramp is actually less nonconforming than the existing steps are.
And this, there was some talk about replacing the steps as well? Or did I misunderstand that?
Repair and replace the existing.
Yeah, okay. Well, if they're existing, it doesn't, that doesn't matter. Okay, very good. Thank you. With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed, and I will invite comment from my fellow board members, starting with Ms. Scott.
Oh, switching it up.
Yeah, I'm switching it around tonight.
I actually think this is...
Nick has to take a call.
I think this is a reasonable request. They want to make sure that their building is accessible for the public. I think they've tried to make it as conforming as possible and in keeping with the neighborhood, so I have no concerns.
Mr. Waters?
Yeah, it's a beautiful church, and obviously, it would be hard to conform, you know, with the current layout, and a ramp is important, so absolutely, I agree.
Ms. Specter Morgan?
I agree with my colleagues.
The ramp is less intrusive than the existing stairways, so I see no issue with this.
I also agree with my colleagues. I think in the past, we've looked upon a handicap ramp as self-evidently a reasonable use of a property. With that, I'll request a motion.
I will make a motion to approve for the reasons stated.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Move in second, and any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous? Variance, was it just one variance? A variance is granted. Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Potter, have you and Mr. Imzey had a chance to chat?
Yes, we did, and we'll go forward with the four-member board tonight.
Okay, very good.
Let me do the other thing, because we don't talk about the fact that we were removed. I guess anybody's here.
Yeah, if anyone is here, I should have said this earlier. If anyone is here for 5121 John J. Flatley Company, that case has been withdrawn and will not be heard this evening, so you need not stay unless you make a hobby of hanging out at zoning board meetings. But we will not be hearing that case.
Please come in on us.
Which brings us to our next case this evening, which is case 5521, Continental Paving. This is a recessed hearing, but as I understand it, no testimony was taken at that hearing. Is that correct?
That's correct. We just opened and recessed.
Okay. The applicant wishes to utilize a road on its property as part of its excavation quarry business and future development of an asphalt plant on an adjacent property located in the town of Pembroke, New Hampshire, Pembroke, New Hampshire, and requests that the zoning board overturn the zoning administrator's determination that there is no legal nonconforming right, vested right, to utilize the existing private driveway on the property to provide ingress and egress to the existing excavation site and quarry on adjacent land under the same ownership in Pembroke, as it is neither a permitted use in the GWP district, nor is there evidence that a legal right to use the property as such was ever established, and there is no legal nonconforming right or vested right to use the existing private driveway on the property to provide ingress and egress to an asphalt manufacturing plant on adjacent land under the same ownership in Pembroke, as it is neither a permitted use in the district, nor is there evidence that a legal right to use the property was, as such, was ever established. This is for property located at 320 Sheep Davis Road in a GWP Gateway Performance District. Before we move on to stage two of this, I'm going to ask the board to take up the question of whether or not we will uphold the code administrator's decision on this matter. Gentlemen, can I swear you in? Or ladies and gentlemen, excuse me. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
I do.
All right. May we have your names for the record, please?
Yes, Morgan Hollis. I'm an attorney with Godistman and Hollis in Nashua, 39 East Pearl Street, and I'm here representing the owner and the applicant, Continental Paving. And, Mr. Chairman, I apologize to the full board for the volume here, but this is a very complicated issue, as you probably all gathered, and I think as a beginning note, we have two administrative appeals, and then, depending on what your decision is on each of the administrative appeals, we may have a variance or two variance requests. So we take up the administrative appeals. I did submit a... I did submit electronic versions and a couple of copies, but I brought up other copies with tabs on them because I couldn't transmit electronically.
We like copies with tabs.
So I'll pass these out to all of you. Yeah, I think so.
Pam, will you be testifying?
I will not.
Oh, okay. You just came because it was too much for one person.
So this is the same material that was electronic, but this has a nice index and tabs for us?
No index, but tabs, yes.
Well, okay. But it's the same material?
It is the same material, yes.
All right, that's what I wanted to make sure. I didn't have to speed read.
Given that we are going to be talking about, is this case number two? One's asphalt and one's lining, right?
Yes, one's excavation driveway and the other is a asphalt plant driveway.
So I.
And they, they kind of, if you look for the word asphalt or excavation, the word appeal, it's right on the front page, so. And what I tried to do was in the first booklet, which is the.
Excavation.
Thickest one, it would say.
Asphalt, yeah. I've got one each here.
Exhibits for appeal.
You should too.
Yeah, I already got them ahead of time, yeah. This has a bulk of the exhibits that would roll forward into the other ones as well.
You realize, of course, that there is no way we're going to go through all of this material today.
I'm going to go through it as rapidly as I can.
He's been practicing. He's very good.
We really need to stick to the narrow question of what, is this, first of all, is the zoning administrator's decision correct or incorrect?
That's right. That's the first issue.
Okay.
Is it correct or incorrect as to the ability to use the gravel driveway?
Yeah, is this a vested right for the owner? So with that in mind, Ernie, would you like to offer any comments at the beginning of the hearing here to fill in on the rationale for why this was, why this decision was made the way it was?
I think when Craig did the research on this entire project, he found that there was not ever, at least there was no evidence of any permit actually ever having been issued for the excavation project. And then, you know, moving forward, he went way back and did everything as much as he could from the beginning, but then there's a period of time in there that represents, you know, a period of time that would have been considered an abandonment under the zoning ordinance. And if the use is abandoned, then for that two-year period, then there is, number one, there was no vested right because Craig said that there was never any permit issued. Number two, even if, you know, there was some semblance of something, the use was abandoned, so at that point, you know, the use of a road to service a project over in Pembroke and coming out into Concord was not an allowable use. And I can bring up his letters. If you'd like to go over the summary because it's probably stated a lot more clearly there.
But this is just about the use of the road, all the excavations happening in Pembroke?
Yes.
That's correct. Yes.
So if I understood what I read correctly, the ruling was that this use, the use on the property that we're talking about, the one in Concord, because what goes on in Pembroke is not in our purview, nor is it germane to what we're doing tonight. The, as I understand it, the operation was started without a zoning variance or, which it would have required.
A special exception, I believe, back.
A special exception, I'm sorry. So it was started without a special exception, which meant that when it was in process, it was actually in violation of the ordinance?
Correct.
Okay. So the ruling was that since it was not, under the ordinance, a legal use of the property, the fact that it was being used that way did not create any rights to continue to use it that way on anyone's part?
That's correct.
Including for a driveway?
Right.
Okay. And that was true for both the asphalt plant and for the excavation?
Yes, the asphalt plant, that's what's in Pembroke.
Okay, all right.
And that's proposed, Mr. Chairman.
Right.
It's been approved but not yet built.
Okay. All right. So do I have that correct?
You do.
All right. Very good. Mr. Hollis?
Thank you. Well, you know, I wanted to sort of bring the board up to speed because I know the board sits there and says, "What, why, what's going on here?" And what's going on here is this property has been utilized for excavation for over 35 years, and the driveway for over 35 years. Driveway permits have been issued by the state of New Hampshire, as they are supposed to. Plans, subdivision plans have reflected on those plans, various uses. There have been letters back and forth of the city of Concord acknowledging the use, et cetera. But to cut quickly to the chase, and I came on board in 2009 when my client was buying the Pembroke property from Concord Sand and Gravel, which owned all of Concord excavation sites, which are extensive, and they're shown on the tabs, and they also, and they also own Pembroke, all contiguous land, all touching each other, and there's a tab that shows the land that was owned by Mr. Ladd, and it was rather extensive. It was acknowledged by the Army Corps as being, all of it being mined, over 350 acres. So, but to cut right to the chase, we asked, we were coming forward with an asphalt plant in Pembroke, which was a permitted use, and we asked the town. They had previously opined in 2010 that an asphalt plant, a driveway to an asphalt plant would not be a permitted use in the city of Concord in this zone. At the time, we weren't, we hadn't applied. What had happened was, we asked the town of Pembroke for it. Pembroke said it's a manufacturing use. We went to court, and the court ruled it was a manufacturing use, not permitted in Pembroke. Fast forward 10 years later, Pembroke changed its zoning, an asphalt plant was allowed now. We went forward and got a permit. Concord again objected, and we asked for a determination at that time, because we never really asked for a determination in 2009 because there was nothing before Concord. We never got before Pembroke with it. It was, we lost in the courts. So we then got a determination. We asked for, and what we received for a determination was, not only can't you have an asphalt plant, and that's consistent with the decision in 2010, but you can't use that road for your existing gravel excavation site because it was never lawfully permitted. And so that's what the decision was. So we're here tonight on those two distinct issues. One is, we got a driveway that's been there for 50 years, been used for excavation for 40 years. We think he's in error, and we think we have a vested right to the use of that driveway, just that driveway, for excavation of materials. So that's the first one. The second one is the same question on asphalt plant. So to go right to the heart of what you just raised, Mr. Chairman, I would ask you to turn to Tab 2 in the thickest book you have. Tab 10, I'm sorry. Tab 10 is a letter back in August of 2010, addressed to Carlos Bia from Craig Walker. And if you scale down to the third paragraph, which is highlighted in the book, it says, "The subject property has most recently been used for the excavation of earth materials. Concord City Ordinance Principal Use L9, AKA gravel pit. On March 19, 1958, the ZBA granted permission for the establishment of a gravel pit on two lots northeast of the subject property. The gravel pit at that time was considered a nonperforming use, not permitted in the base district." And he goes on to say, "Since then, it appears additional adjacent properties emerged with the original parcel. The gravel pit operation has migrated to the subject property." So the one thing that I believe Mr. Walker had in serious error in his letter that was just issued, and that's the determination, is, he says, "No permit was ever issued." But in 2010, he said a permit was issued. But we've asked the city for a copy of that special exception. They can't find it. We can't find it. The prior owner is deceased, Mr. Ladd, and his records are in a barn somewhere buried. So we do know, though, that he had it because he has a specific date referenced. So our whole argument is, indeed, there was a special permit issued, a special exception issued. It is not for this exact piece, but it was issued for parcel, two parcels which are just north of this exact piece. At the time, all of that land was owned by Mr. Ladd. Everything on the east side of 106 going up to where the new highway is and going all the way down to Walmart, including what is now Walmart, was owned by Mr. Ladd. At the same time, he owned across the river, all in Pembroke. And that is shown in a composite plan. If I can find it quickly. That's the one.
What tab? 17. Oh.
Tab 17.
Same book?
Same book. So if you look at it, on Tab 17, you will see that I've highlighted the subject premises, but you can see that Mr. Ladd owned all of the land north, south, and southeast of that site. And that was in 86. I've also attached in, on tabs, copies of the deeds. I've also shown under tabs, copies of plans over the years, and I think most significantly, I think if you start in Tabs 22, you get a sense of where this started. This is 1960. And if you look, I've highlighted the parcel. I've shown the area that was under excavation in 1960. This is the area that was referenced in the special exception, but as shown in that other map, Mr. Ladd owned all of this area. Now, if you turn to Tab 23, you will see, again, this is highlighted, but if you compare what's in 1960 to 1970, there's activity moving towards the parcel. And then if you compare 1980, you will see, again, continuous excavation, excavation roads, and he's now in the subject property as of the spring of 1980. So this is, these dates are relatively important because in 1979, the state of New Hampshire passed what's known as RSA 155-E, which is the gravel excavation statute, which essentially exempts all property owners from local regulation except if a special exception is required. But the requirements of 155E are very specific, and they're very significant. So I'm not going to go through each of the tabs. Each of the tabs is there for a reason. I'm just going to make my argument on why they're wrong. First of all, the denial, as I said, is based on the use for gravel operation, and it was never permitted. I've shown that there was a permit. Our position is that the use of Lot 18 for gravel excavation was and is permitted, and that the gravel driveway, which is the subject of the request, is part of that permitted use, which has never been abandoned and is allowed to continue. The gravel driveway has never been abandoned. The entire determination hinges on there never having been a permit issued, but we know that there was a permit issued. We know it because it's referenced in the 2010 letter. I don't know why he forgot to reference that in his most recent letter, but as soon as I saw it, I tried to get a hold of him, and he had retired. I've asked Ernie if he could find it. They've been unable to find it. We actually looked for it ourselves, unable.
When you say it, you mean the permit?
The permit, the special exception. So the key question is, was this special exception on the Ladd property to the north of the subject property, subject premises, enough to get you in the door that you had a permit? And if so, is the driveway part of that legal use? To determine it, you have to take a look at RSA 155E, and those are under Tabs 6 and 7, and the New Hampshire cases. And it's rare that I actually cite cases or bring cases to the zoning board because I know very few lawyers, except in law, of course. I sit on the board.
A neighbor.
And they don't want to hear, they don't want to hear about law. But this is what, this is what you, sitting as the administrator, have to evaluate, because this is what Craig should have evaluated. I would argue that Craig misevaluated it, because he said, first of all, there was never a special exception, but indeed there was. So if there is, you now go to 155E and determine, okay, are you exempt? And how does the fact that it's up north of this site carry on and allow you to be on this site? 155E1 defines what a site is, and it says, "Any area of contiguous land in common ownership as of 1979, and also any area where excavation has occurred or is eligible to occur." So that's pretty significant because it is a little bit of a foreshadowing of the case law. And it, and it points out that as long as you own contiguous land, if you start at one end, you have a right under 155E to continue to go, subject to whatever regulations the town might have in place. 155E2 says, "There's an exception from a permit if it lawfully existed before August 24, 1979, provided compliant, the applicant is compliant when the project first began." I would argue he is compliant. When the first stage of the project began, Mr. Ladd was compliant because he got a special exception from this city. No, "If the special exception required by municipality and expansion may be restricted or modified by conditions," this is right in the statute I'm reading from, "or may be modified by order of the regulator, which is the planning board, if after notice to the owner and hearing, the regulator finds such expansion will have substantially different and adverse impact on the neighbors." So let's address that point first. There was never any notice, there was never any hearing, so that section, which allows the regulator to say, "You must stop here until you come and go forward, and we decide if you can go forward." That was never done, there's nothing in the record anywhere. So Mr. Ladd lawfully continued to expand on contiguous land as he was allowed to do under the state statute because he had a special exception when he began. The New Hampshire cases which are in there are pretty straightforward, and they're the seminal cases on gravel pits, and expansion of gravel pits, which nobody likes to have occur these days, but back when the law was passed, it was, there was a necessity of getting gravel out to build highways in this state. And the state took a hold of it and said, "We're going to, we're going to supersede all these little victims of regulation, with the exception, you need a special exception." And Whitcomb &amp; Carroll discusses what contiguous boundaries are, and they look at the status as of 1979. Wolfborough versus Smith was a more detailed case. So in those cases, it says, "If you're contiguous, you can continue to go. You can continue to go forward." Wolfborough versus Smith, and another case that's in there, states, "You've got to prove three things. The burden is on the applicant to prove three things. Prove the activities being pursued were being pursued when the law was in effect in 1979." So we have to look at what was going on in 1979. Prove that the area proposed for future excavation was intended to be excavated as of 1979. And number three, prove continuous operation does not or will not have a substantially different and adverse effect, impact on the neighborhood. So here's our evidence. I'm just going to recite the tabs quickly. You can look them up. Tab 10 reflects Mr. Walker found a special exception. So that's number one. Tab 17 shows the composite of land of Ladd in 86. Tabs 19, 20, and 21 reflect ownership before 1979. So while the plan of the composite is dated 86, I've supplemented that with the deeds which reflect he owned it prior to 1979. Tabs 22 to 24, which I just went through, show continuing activities being pursued. Keeps on mining, people, including the city of Concord, keep coming, picking up gravel. The gravel operation continues on. Tab 25 shows the status in 2010, and if you turn to 25, that gives you an idea of where we are. Sort of today. This plan, by the way, was one that was used as a marketing plan in 2010 when they were trying to market the next great development on this subject parcel. But if you look, you can see the expansion and extension of the graveling that was occurring at that time. You can actually see the road, you can actually see where it crosses the South Cook River, and the excavation in Pembroke begins. All of this land was contiguous, so I know. So I know, Mr. Chairman, you said Pembroke isn't within the purview of this board, but it is part of an overall composite of land, which under the state statute, he's allowed to keep going. In fact, until nineteen eighty-nine, 155-E said, "Boundaries of towns don't mean anything. If you own land across towns, you can keep on going." In eighty-nine, they changed to say, "Hey, that contiguous definition stops at a boundary of a town." But this was all prior to eighty-nine. It was all excavated prior to eighty-nine, it was ongoing prior to eighty-nine. So we think with that evidence, we proved that the activity is being pursued when the law was effective in nineteen seventy-nine. Next, tab twenty-five, as I say, reflects that the area proposed for future excavation was always intended to be excavated as of seventy-nine. He owned it, he continued to go out and do it. Tabs eleven and twelve and thirteen reflect letters back and forth between Hamilton Price, the then code enforcement officer, who was concerned about Mr. Ladd filing a report about what he was going to do for reclamation. And the specific quote is, "Once notice from the municipality is received, must show incremental reclamation or will be deemed abandoned." But again, no notice, that's what the statute says. There was no notice from anyone in Concord that this was being abandoned. There were letters about, "What are you going to do about reclamation?" And Mr. Ladd's response back, it's shown in the tabs, is, "We're still working these pits. We'll, we'll get to it when it's time." So it was an ongoing excavation. Tab fourteen is a letter of Ladd showing his intent. If you turn to that tab. It's a letter to the governor in nineteen ninety-one, says he's operated it, and it's been in operation prior to nineteen seventy-nine. Tab fifteen and sixteen shows the intent to excavate all, and the independent conclusion by the Army Corps, this is an Army Corps letter or memo, which is tab sixteen. Number five says, "Levi owns considerable amount of property, three hundred and fifty acres, question mark, along the South Cook River. He owns the sand and gravel operation, and this is the use he has put to most of his land to. Most of his land was purchased in the sixties, including this parcel. In the late eighties to early nineties, he excavated approximately point five acres of wetland." Got himself in a little problem with the Army Corps, and he had to remediate, and he ended up deeding that most northerly parcel off to the state as remediation. But I submitted this just to show that the records reflect that indeed, the Army Corps was all over this. City of Concord, DES, everybody knew about this. And at no point in time did someone even suggest that he had no right to be doing this. Everybody understood he was vested. Tab twenty-seven and twenty-eight shows the existing road in two thousand and ten. And if you turn to those tabs, that's the subdivision that created the land going to the state. I've highlighted sort of what the purpose of the plan was, which is to cut off Mr. Ladd's land and to, he had to dig some, make some ponds as remediation for the fact that he filled wetlands. And then he deeded that to the state. If you go out there today, there's a place to pull in and walk around, that's what he did. Twenty-eight is a subdivision of plan approved by the planning board at the time, and the only purpose of my showing that is, when I went to the planning board to cut off the piece for Walmart, which is what this is, nineteen ninety-two, there was a bridge shown on this plan. So when the zoning administrator said that, you know, there's no record, no evidence, nobody knew about this, that's just not true. It was on plans of record, it was reviewed by the planning board. Now, we think that covers the requirements of B, which said, the second prong of the test, which said, "You have to prove that the area proposed for future excavation was intended to be excavated." But if that's not enough, I had asked Mr. Cole, Robert Cole, who was the president from nineteen eighty-five to two thousand and ten, president of Concord Sand and Gravel, about his recollection. He was unable to come tonight and testify, but I did get him to sign an affidavit yesterday, and I am going to submit the affidavit as evidence. But I will, I will read the relevant parts, just says, "I was president from eighty-five to two thousand and ten, I was co-owner of Concord Sand and Gravel. When I began in nineteen eighty-five, Concord Sand and Gravel was excavating earth products from properties owned by the co-owner of the company, Levi Ladd, located in Concord, operating under a special exception granted by the city of Concord in approximately nineteen fifty-eight, under the regulations in existence." And it talks about the regulations. "The excavation site in Concord continued across all land owned by Levi Ladd, from north to south, until it reached the property which has been sold to Walmart. In nineteen eighty-six, as the Concord property was being excavated, Concord Sand and Gravel attempted to continue its excavation across the South Cook River, onto other contiguously owned property of Levi Ladd located in Pembroke. Starting in or around nineteen eighty-six, excavation of both Concord and Pembroke continued by Concord Sand and Gravel, until two thousand and ten, when the Pembroke site was sold to Continental Paving, Inc. Between nineteen eighty-six and two thousand and ten, under my presidency, Levi Ladd, as owner of the property, applied for and received a zoning variance to allow it to replace an existing building housing construction equipment servicing the excavation site in Concord. During this time, the private driveway traversing the Concord property was the main haul road for excavated materials from the Concord property, and as a haul road for the expansion of earth excavation materials from Pembroke. At all times of my presidency, officials of the city of Concord, including planning and zoning, members of the planning board, were all well aware of the ongoing excavation, continued use of the haul road for the expansion of earth excavation on the Pembroke property. In fact, the city purchased materials from the Concord property and were aware of the excavation of the Pembroke property. Former code enforcement administrator, Ham Rice, was particularly only concerned about reclamation plans for when the excavation site in Concord would be completed, but not about requiring any permits for its continued operations. Nineteen eight, two thousand and nine, Concord Sand and Gravel sought a permit from Pembroke to expand into areas of land that were not included in the original ownership area of Levi Ladd. At that time, the city of Concord, as in a butter, received notice, visited the site, participated in the process by requesting and obtaining Concord Sand and Gravel's agreement to install monitoring wells and provide monitoring on a regular basis. Again, no one ever indicated the Concord excavation or the driveway being used was illegal or required a permit. In two thousand and ten, at the time of the sale of Pembroke property by Mr. Ladd to Continental Paving, the driveway was in existence and used by Concord Sand and Gravel for its excavation in Concord and Pembroke, and a non-exclusive driveway easement was granted to Continental Paving to use the driveway in Concord for the Pembroke property. Condition upon the requirement that if the driveway had to be relocated closer to the river in order to allow development of the Concord property for retail, Continental Paving would allow its relocation." So I'm going to submit that, Mr. Chair. I brought a bunch of copies. So that gets us to the third, the third prong, or the third requirement under the case law. We have to prove continuous operation does not or will not have a substantially different and adverse impact on the neighborhood. So as you're expanding, case law, not the statute, says, you not only have to prove that you owned it, you have to prove that it was intended to be that way, and you were going to keep on going, but you have to prove there won't be any adverse impact. So tab thirty-four is a DOT driveway permit reflecting access was granted to an ongoing pit in two thousand and five. Tab thirty-five, repaired expansion plans. We know that Pembroke has been going on for a number of years, because it's called an expansion of the pit. Tab forty-three reflects that the property is still taxed by city of Concord as sand and gravel. Tab thirty-six, Concord received notice of the expansion, engaged EG&amp;G as its consultant regarding monitoring wells. Concord Sand and Gravel agreed, as shown in tab thirty-seven. Pembroke Planning Board approved. Tab thirty-eight in Concord did not appeal. This is all background to, there was some concern that an excavation, expansion of the excavation business in Pembroke would somehow cause a problem with the well field of Concord, which is located right there, adjacent to the excavation site. So there was a lot of discussion among consultants. Concord asked if the applicant would sink wells and monitor it, so their future wells, if they ever needed them, they're not used now, would be, there'd be a monitoring record, and they'd be good. And if there was a problem on the site, it would be known well ahead of time. That was agreed upon, as I say, everybody participated, everybody went out to the site and looked at where the wells should be. This was part of the expansion approval. And in the end, Concord Planning Board, which had been the participating authority, made a decision and stated in the, in the letter that they were happy, they were satisfied, and that was, that was the end of it. So they didn't have a firm position that it was, in fact, going to be substantially different and adverse impact on the neighborhood. The driveway was going to continue to be used. They never said anything about the driveway. They knew that was the driveway, because the plan shows it as the driveway. In fact, the plan, which is behind the tab, also says, "You may not come out North Pembroke Road," for a variety of reasons, but that's an emergency access only. So what about the road? Let's get back to the road. I think we've shown the three criteria of the pit, but how does the road differentiate from the pit? Well, the road is part of the pit operation. If you look at those aerial photos, you see it's a spine road with lots of forks going off of it. On the Concord property, they excavate, they drive down the spine road and out the driveway. As they expanded to Pembroke, they came across a bridge, down the spine road, and out the driveway. That use of that road for excavation, for driving excavation trucks, was never, ever abandoned. So that component of the excavation on the Concord property has never been abandoned. It's continued to this day, had a legal right to be there as part of the excavation, but it, it was never abandoned, as was alleged by Craig. The rest of the pit is finished. There's been no reclamation, because Pembroke is still ongoing. But that component of the pit remains active today. So in conclusion, contrary to Mr. Walker, it was permitted. Land was contiguous in seventy-nine. Intent to excavate was reflected on lots of documents. The actual expansion occurred, without objection. No notice and hearing, as set forth on the, on the statute, was ever given or ever asked for. It's not adverse impact on the neighborhood. You have the traffic study in the, in the book. It shows that the DOT approved the driveway, it's the right place for the driveway. The driveway itself, as, if you didn't gather from the materials, was set up by an easement. There's a legal easement in, in the tabs, and there's an easement described, so that no matter what occurred on Concord Sand and Gravel in the Concord property, the Pembroke had a right to cross over. Now, in that easement, there's a reserved right to move it. So at Concord, as we knew they wanted to do, developed it, that easement had to move over and give it room. That became quite apparent in the plans that were presented to the planning board during the early two thousands, all the way up to two thousand and ten, for discussion. And those plans reflected, how do you, and they're behind tab, tab twenty-nine and thirty. Tab twenty-nine shows one, tab twenty-one. Thirty-one shows another, thirty-two shows another. These are all different developers, apparently, coming in, presenting plans. The point of me showing it is, that driveway can be used without an adverse impact. So that's the third prong. Can it be used without an adverse impact? And I think with that, while the driveway is an integral part of the grandfathered use, and the rest of it has sort of been abandoned, that driveway has never been abandoned. While it's limited, because it was never abandoned, no reclamation plan ever filed for the Concord site, that still has a vested right. It still has a right to be there, has a legal rights protected under 155-E. That's my argument as to why I believe Craig was an error. I don't know why he didn't mention it. That, to me, is, when I got it, I immediately called, of course, he was not there. I wrote, saying I'd like to talk to him, but the decision was in, we had to begin the process of the appeal. It doesn't mean we haven't met with the city to try to continue these discussions, but to me, that's just a fundamental flaw in his determination, and I don't understand why that occurred. But it's so critical, because that gives us the vested right to have that gravel driveway. I'm going, just going to give you a foreshadowing, in that the reason we can't go out North Pembroke Road is, if you've ever gone over to North Pembroke Road, you will see, it is a ten percent slope. We had our traffic engineer look at it, he gave a report, it's in one of the packages that you have, if we ever get to a variance. But there's no landing platform at the top, it's a ten-degree slope. You're coming down ten degrees, you're going to put your air brakes on, you're going to be grinding the gears going up. My clients are here, they would testify as to how impossible that is. Even though the bridge is being repaired and replaced, that road is not where you want to be. Also, you're talking about coming three intersections, going north, which is the way all these trucks go, they go out to the highway. So you're going to bring all this traffic, first by a residential house, and then up to an intersection. Everybody's going to sit and wait while the first truck goes through the light, and then the light changes, and the second truck goes through. Then they're coming down, going north on 106.
Let's, let's get to this later, in, in the event that we need to.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to give a little bit of a picture of why this is so critical to this application. We just think it was a, it was a mistake. I don't know why he made the mistake, but...
So do you want to talk about the asphalt plant?
The asphalt plant, that, that decision is obviously different. That decision hinges, in my opinion, on a determination which he, he states, that the owner failed to meet its burden as to non-conformity, to show it has a legal right to utilize the road to provide ingress and egress, and, ingress and egress, to the quarry and the proposed asphalt manufacturing plant. And then he goes on to essentially cite, as, as has been cited in other letters behind, in these tabs, that this driveway use is a use, and it is a manufacturing use, because it's all part of the asphalt plant. And we maintain that's an error. We believe that it is not a use. And I'm just going to walk through the tabs on the other book, which is the thinner book, and it's titled, "Exhibits for Appeal of Decision of Zoning Administrator: The Use of a Gravel Driveway Located on Map Forty-Five Z Lot Eighteen for Transit of Asphalt Manufactured Product to and From Adjacent Land is Not Permit." So in this one, tab two, should I wait?
Yeah, that's the right one.
Probably.
Yeah, probably. I was actually thinking, we could, could we do just one of these at a time?
Would you prefer?
I, I would prefer that.
It's just going to overwhelm. It is a lot to take in. And you know, if you, if you, for example, decide that Craig's decision was incorrect, now that you've heard everything and seen everything, then that knocks out one, one of the issues. If you decide that he was correct, then I have to proceed.
Laura, while you were out of the room...
I'm sorry, I had to blow my nose.
We paused, but there's a question.
We didn't do any more hearing, but Laura Scott raised the question of whether or not we ought to consider the question of the gravel road to the excavation, independent of the asphalt plant proposal now, rather than going through the asphalt plant proposal testimony. Is that the consensus of the board?
Yes.
Yes.
Either way is fine with me.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we've got at least three out of five who want to do it that way, and I'm perfectly content to do it either way, so why don't we do that, then? So what this means, then, is that...
Sorry.
We, we need to talk about the, the board needs to consider whether or not we agree with the appellant, that Mr. Walker's determination was incorrect, or not. Now, if I correctly understood you, the key point in your case is that you believe that the state law that was passed to enable gravel pits in the, in the state of New Hampshire, when it was passed back in the...
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine. When they said contiguous, they meant, that implied that if you got a permit to mine gravel on a piece of property, every piece of property you owned that happened to border on that piece of property was also permitted.
That's correct. That's, that's our position, I believe the cases stand for that. And I believe that the definition... And I believe that the definition of contiguous...
No, forever. Ever.
Definition of contiguous in the statute is pretty clear. The statute did change in 89, where they imposed a imaginary boundary, saying at the town limit. This all occurred before 89. So that is our case, yes.
So that, really, everything that you're arguing depends on that?
Yes.
I guess what we should do is talk about that. Before we do, Ernie, do you have any more, or David, any, anything that you want to add on the subject of, of that law, or the rest of the arguments?
Nope. I think Craig's letter is pretty clear that that's, he believed it to be abandoned. The use was abandoned, and I think he also thought the limits of the town restricted the expansion into Pembroke by right.
Into Pembroke?
Right.
Okay. But he did not argue that the, or maybe he didn't even address the question of whether or not contiguous properties that were different lots were included in that approval by...
As far as the town of Concord, I don't think he ever disagreed that they could expand in Concord as a continuous lot.
Okay.
But I think he interpreted the RSA as it did not allow them to go into Pembroke. He considered Concord, if I'm reading his letter right, I want to speak for him, but to be abandoned, because they hadn't been excavating in here in several years.
Okay.
They actually removed their scale house several years ago, so it was, it was an abandoned functionality in Concord, thus no longer the authorized use.
Okay. Were they using the road all that time to get to Pembroke?
Yes. They've been using it since 1985.
All right. Well, I guess we ought to...
And, and Mr. Chair, this one, I, I, I know that Craig wasn't a lawyer, so I can't malign him, but the statute that he was relying on, that is, that the boundary stops at the town, was the change in the statute in 89, not when this started, when Levi Ladd owned all this land together, and he started, and he got the first special exception. That special exception is good for his entirety of the land, because that's what the statute stood for until 1989.
I understand.
And I have copies of that statute, so, but...
I think we do too.
Do, do we have to, on, on this appeal issue, do we have to get public comment, or no?
No.
Okay.
Typically, we don't take public testimony on our determinations on the...
Okay. I'm just making sure.
Of course, we would if, if we get to the variance.
Yeah. Yeah, the copy, what I have is a copy, is the original act in 79, and then the change in 89. So what's in your tab is the current law. But I just wanted to be clear that in 79, there was no reference to the town boundary. It just simply says, what's exempt is excavation from an area contiguous to or from contiguous land in common ownership with stationary manufacturing and processing plants in operation as of the effective date, which you earth obtained from such area.
Okay. Well, let's talk this over, ladies and gentlemen.
May I ask a question?
You guys?
I just want to make sure I, I have this correctly. Is that driveway still being used right now?
It is still being used.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't imagining that. Okay, thank you.
To access the Pembroke side of the, of the gravel court.
It is, and there's also a, one single parcel that we don't own, that other people use that driveway for, as a easement.
That it's also a quarry, or it's unrelated?
I'm not sure what they took.
Okay.
It's not, it's not owned by us, so...
But you're currently using this road to access the Pembroke side to, to mine for gravel?
That is correct.
Okay.
And we are, we are not mining for gravel on the Concord side, but the, there has been no abandonment of that access road.
Okay. Thank you.
So the, but the, the easement was granted by one private party or another?
And it, and it merged. Now that Continental owns both parcels again. It was Ladd, then Continental bought one piece with an easement, and then they merged. So it's all one contiguous piece.
So now they have an easement on their own land?
Yeah, or no easement, because of doctrine of merger.
Okay. Well, who wants to go first? Andrew?
Well...
You have the misfortune to be next in line.
It's fascinating, by the way. I think, and I think these, these guys are in a difficult position, because it's super complicated, both factually and legally, and Craig, you know, Craig was great, and he, he wrote a very detailed letter doing historical analysis and legal analysis. I think that the applicant...
What tab is Craig's letter on?
It's in, it's in our initial packet.
It's probably one of the tabs, too.
It's tab one.
It's tab one.
Yeah, so, so, but, but obviously, the applicant here has, has rebutted it in several, I think, important ways. The two most important are the fact that, you know, he states there, there was a special exception, which he calls a perm, essentially says the same thing as permitted use, going back, you know, prior to, you know, way prior to 19, I think, the 50s. And second, that Craig overlooked the, in fairness to Craig, I mean, it's a pretty nuanced, it's a pretty nuanced thing, but he, he overlooked the fact that the 197, as of 1979, Mr. Ladd, or the property owner at that time, had a, had a right, regardless of town lines, to continue to use the property to mine for gravel, which apparently, obviously, standards and priorities have changed, but at that time, that was a huge priority, according to the applicant. And I don't, I don't really think that the city, right now, and I'll give them a chance otherwise, is really, is able to respond to that. I mean, Craig, in detail, I mean, basically, you're referencing back to Craig's letter, which speaks for itself, but Craig, which I don't blame him, he's not interested in coming back and talking to us, unless you want to hire him as an independent contractor, we don't really have the other side of the story. I would imagine if Craig was here, knowing Craig, he wouldn't be silent on this issue, and he'd have a lot to say, and we'd have a very interesting dialogue, but since he's not, we were, I feel like it's sort of unrebutted, what the applicant is saying, and I'm, I, I don't have enough information to contradict it, or to, to, to speak against either his factual or his legal assertions. That's my...
Oh, we're going that way. I didn't know it was either Brownie.
It's, it's Brownie in motion, I'm just kind of ranting.
I agree with Andrew. I think that the 2010 memo, which references the 1958 special exception, is really important. I don't know why that wasn't referenced in Craig's most recent letter, probably because no one can find the special exception, and he didn't pull out the 2010 memo. I'm sure there was nothing nefarious about it, but it does, setting us that we're gonna get to whether using a road for something is a use of a property, which is a whole nother issue that I have problems with. But I think that this road has clearly been used for excavation since the 50s. I think the land is contiguous, I think under 155E, that means it's permitted, and I think that the road may continue to be used for gravel purposes.
It's, okay. Laura Scott?
Okay. I actually am familiar with the, the operations. I used to be the planner in Pembroke, so I know that side. I also hated working on gravel pits. That was my least favorite land use issue ever to work on, because it's so difficult. The laws are old, the properties are old, it's always multiple properties, there's, there are records, if there are any, or like a scrap of paper. You did a great job pulling all this together, thank you. Again, I, I was not in agreement with Craig's determination, reading the packet, finding that other letter where it showed that there was a special exception, makes me feel a little bit better about that. I think it's always been used, it hasn't been abandoned, and I, I don't agree with Mr. Walker's determination.
Pretty much the same thing for me also. There was reference to three special exceptions, so I take that as, I'm gonna take that as fact, and I, I see that as continuous use.
Three special exceptions?
Yeah.
There's references to some of the letters, I think.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, I just picked up on one.
So, I, I guess I'm gonna accept that, since we have anything to the contrary, or have any, any proof to the contrary.
In Craig's letter of the 20, August 20th of this year, page...
Tab one.
Tab one. In section, Roman numeral two, which is top of the second page, he says, "There is no evidence that the property owner ever established a legal right to use the property as a quarry or an asphalt manufacturing plant in accordance with Concord zoning ordinance." But what I'm hearing is that he did, not a, an asphalt plant.
Right, right.
But a quarry.
Yes.
That he did establish that because he got the permit, which no one can find, but there is, obviously, somebody found it at some point, because Craig thought it had happened.
Mm-hmm.
Must have been written in disappearing ink, but there it was. So it seems to me that Craig was mistaken here, or was just unaware of the way that law was applied in this case, which I certainly was. So I would be inclined to support a motion saying that for the purposes of the gravel pit, that he was an error, and that a variance is not required.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'll just say, in Craig's defense, because I think we all agree Craig was, was great, that this isn't, he may very well have, have agreed in further discussion, this isn't, this is, you know, a very, very difficult decision, so, but, but I definitely, you know, support the motion.
Yeah, no, I don't think anybody deserves criticism here, except possibly the chairman of the zoning board. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So in this case, we have determined that the variance for access to the gravel pit on the driveway is not, is not required.
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
Now, asphalt.
So the next one is the determination that, I'm gonna sort of shorten it up. This is the smallest one, and it says, Exhibits for Appeal of Decision of Zoning Administrator: The Use of a Gravel Driveway for Transit, Transit of Asphalt Manufacturing Product to and from adjacent land is not permitted, requires a variance.
Okay.
It's the thinnest one.
One through 11 here.
Yeah, and, and I did, you know, exhibit one, is include all exhibits from the thick book, so I didn't have to repeat them in case you need to go back there, at least for the record, I wanted...
You're right.
Yeah. So I, I think in this case, Craig's letter, which is tab two, back to Carlos, makes it clear, and he says, "The asphalt operations and activity are wholly separate and distinct from excavation of earth materials." That's his conclusion. And I, I don't disagree that an asphalt manufacturing facility is different than earth excavation. In fact, I included the court decision under tab three that says it is quite different, it's manufacturing. So I don't dispute that issue. I then included under tab four, which was the notice of the planning board in Pembroke granting the asphalt plant, and that's as a result of Pembroke having made an amendment to their ordinance, which allowed manufacturing in the zone in which this excavation site is located. So they, my clients proceeded to Pembroke, received the approved plan for an asphalt plant. And then that led to teeing it up with Concord. Now that we actually have a plan, and it's been approved, and we're ready to go, give us your answer as to whether we can use the driveway for the asphalt plant. And I think it's best summarized in tab five, which is Carlos Bia's letter, which, I don't want to drag this out, but his letter wasn't an official determination, so it took us several months to then get Craig to issue an official determination. So he dove into it a little bit differently than Carlos did. But I think Carlos sums it up in his third paragraph, uh, fourth paragraph, it says, "The proposal to conduct asphalt operations and activity upon the subject property via providing vehicle access to and from a proposed asphalt plant in the town of Pembroke is not a permitted use in either the GWP district, the RO district, or anywhere. Using the property to provide primary vehicle access to and from an asphalt plant located on a parcel of land in an adjacent town effectively creates a primary use that is not permitted on the subject property." So that's his decision, that the driveway is, creates the principal use.
Did Craig issue a similar memo?
He didn't go into it in detail, because his conclusion was, you didn't have a right to be there.
Okay.
At all.
So he didn't distinguish the asphalt plant from...
Right. But I, I'm gonna go with he would have, I mean, he said, in his opinion, you may not use the road for an asphalt plant. He just didn't go into the detail that this letter does.
All right.
But I think that's the basis of his decision, and that's the one we accept. So in tab six, Elizabeth Harding, a lawyer in my office, wrote to Mr. Bia and said, "We take issue with this determination, and here's why we take issue." And it starts at the bottom of that first page, and goes over to the second, when it says, "There's no evidence or facts to support the claim that primary vehicle access to and from an asphalt plant equates to a primary use on the Concord sand and gravel lot." Now, mind you, this is just a driveway, and it's a total of two and a half acres out of this entire parcel. And the easement allowed it to be relocated. At the time, it was an easement. So if somebody wanted to move it, the easement had to be moved, so it's a flexible easement. The Concord zoning ordinance defines principal use as the primary purpose for which a lot or structure is used. The driveway is not the primary use of the Concord sand and gravel lot. The driveway cannot be deemed a principal use. The driveway is a pre-existing accessory use to the Concord sand and gravel lot, and is a prior existing nonconforming use. I think we've established that the driveway itself, for excavation, is a prior legal nonconforming use, and it continues to this day. But our argument here is, by putting, using it to access the asphalt plant does not indeed create a primary use on that lot. It is simply a driveway. And we cited a case, and I provided a copy of the case. And that case is... Tab seven, which is the Huckleberry case, and tab eight goes on a little bit farther, that's the Granite State Minerals case. And the Huckleberry case, if you turn to that tab, it has a pretty relevant section right in the middle, which is highlighted. This was about a group of residents who went to court because property on an adjacent parcel was using the property's own residential to have a driveway for industrial use. And the trial court ruled it doesn't create a use, and the Supreme Court said as follows, "The residents reason that because the driveway will be used to access lot one," that would be similar to our Pembroke lot, "it is therefore engaged in the same activities as a proposed storage and distribution facility, and therefore, like that facility, requires a variance. We disagree with the residents that the use of the phrase engaged in applies to the driveway. Here, as the trial court determined, although the proposed storage and distribution facility will actually be storing flammable or explosive materials, and thus meets the definition of a heavy industry use, there are no facts to indicate that the driveway on lot two, which in our case would be the Concord property, will be used to store such materials, nor are there any facts indicating that the driveway will be used to process or manufacture material. Accordingly, the driveway is not a heavy industrial use within the meaning of the ordinance." So our position is, it's a transit, it's a driveway, these trucks go back and forth. In fact, we've made it clear by the evidence that was submitted in the traffic study that was performed to get a state permit, and there is a state permit issued to allow trucks going to the asphalt plant to come off 106, cross over Concord.
That's the curb cut.
Yeah, that's the curb cut. So in that study, Mr. Steve Pernell, who's here this evening, and can answer any questions you might have, came to the conclusion that the trucks are the similar, and instead of going all the way over to Ricker Road in Pembroke, and going up 106 and over, they're gonna just be on-site there. So the total gain of trucks on that site would be 8%. It may not seem correct, because you're adding a manufacturing facility to earth excavation, but when you really look at his analysis, it's some go out, the materials go out to the asphalt plant in, in Ricker Road, and then they get manufactured into asphalt, and liquid asphalt gets added, and that, those trucks head out. In this case, those trucks don't have to go out, they're there. So you're saving a number of trips of trucks coming and going on the site, and he called for a pretty significant reduction of trucks as a result of it. But I think the Huckleberry case stands for, just because you have a driveway, doesn't mean it is a use of that property. And it couldn't be clearer here... And it couldn't be clearer here, in our, in our instance, both with the traffic study and with the plans, that, we're in the original book. I think there were twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, yeah, twenty... Let's start at thirty-one, and it goes thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four. You may recall, those are the proposals of a development of, which is permitted within GWP. And it shows how the driveway really is not a, an interference with the use of that property. And it makes it clear, in my mind, and it should in yours, that this is not a principal use. If, if we are asking to allow use of the driveway, we're not asking to allow use of the property for an asphalt plant. We're asking to allow use of the driveway leading to another piece of property. And I think that case is pretty clear. The, the next case, which is the Granite State Minerals case, that's behind tab eight.
Which book?
The thin book. The, the book of, the thinnest book on the appeal relative to using the gravel driveway to transit asphalt. It says, it talks about expansion of non-conforming use. "Because a non-conforming use violates the spirit of zoning laws, any enlargement must be carefully limited. In determining whether a non-conforming use may be expanded or changed, we look to the extent to which the challenged use reflects the nature and purpose of the prevailing non-conforming use, whether the challenged use is merely a different manner of using the original non-conforming use, or whether it constitutes a different use, and whether the challenged use will have a substantially different impact on the neighborhood." So I think in Craig's decision, it wasn't a lawfully permitted use, so he never got to that analysis. But I think our point is, you do have to get to that analysis. You have to rely on Huckleberry, which says driveway is not a principal use. And then I think you can look to the planning board's concerns of why they didn't want that driveway, and that's at tab nine. And those, those concerns relate specifically to the wells on site. There's no manufacturing going on on the Concord property. It is simply a driveway, that's all. I think the driveway has always been intended to be used for truck traffic. The concerns, which are tab thirty-six under the first appeal, reflect that there are some new industrial use, and there'll be substantial changes of the haul road to a commercial driveway. That was what was stated in the letter. And I think the evidence is clear that it already is a commercial driveway. It's a vested commercial driveway. The trucks that go in and out of there, whether they're filled with aggregate or whether they're filled with asphalt, are the same trucks. My clients are here this evening. They'd be happy to answer your questions, but I'm just making a representation on their behalf that those are the same trucks. And I believe the traffic study and also Mr. Nobis' letter, which is here, make it clear that the same exact trucks, different material. It helps a little bit to try to understand liquid asphalt, because it took me a while to understand it. But liquid asphalt is not a hazardous material. It's liquid, and then it gets trucked in, and then it gets mixed with the aggregate, and it's hot. And then when it gets cold, it's hard. So when liquid asphalt, as it's been explained to me, leaks, which doesn't happen very often, but if something happened, let's suppose the truck was driving down this driveway and it leaked, hits the ground and hardens. It is not gas. It's not oil. It doesn't leak through. It's not hazardous materials. It's not even as bad as that case, Huckleberry, which had hazardous materials going through a residential zone. This is simply the same kind of truck activity. The hot material is exactly the same. You watched it, you know, the trucks unload on the highway, it goes out. If they spill it, it's sitting over there in the ground. It's not hazardous material.
I think we're getting over into variance land here.
Well, I, I just wanted to understand that one of the criteria is, is, is use of the driveway for asphalt manufacturing different than use of the driveway for excavation? Because if it's not, that meets one of those criteria. If it is different, then I think you have to say, "Sorry, go get a variance." But we don't think it's a principal use. We don't think it differs. So I said, it's already, already a commercial driveway. There's no other use of that road except these, these heavy-duty trucks that go up and down there. They're the same kind of trucks, same volume of trucks. Even the states gave a permit which said, "Yep, you can drive these same trucks in and out of here. It's, it's a perfect driveway location." So we think that in that instance, the zoning administrator, although he didn't, he didn't support its decision, it was supported on the incorrect assumption that we had no vested right. But had he gone the next step, I think he would have taken the position the city did, which is, "Hey, asphalt manufacturing, that driveway has asphalt manufacturing, it's not permitted." And my argument is, it's a fine point of law, but that's a driveway. And if you think about it in the holistic approach, those plans that show the development with the driveway wrapping around, that speaks volumes. That's what a principal use would be. I mean, there has to be some reclamation of this property to go forward, and when it's reclaimed, there's gonna be use.
By principal use, you mean the shopping center or whatever?
Yeah, shopping center. Principal use right now is it's vacant land. You know, there's, there is no principal use of that property, because the, because the, the only use is the driveway. But it's not a use, it's not a principal activity. It is a driveway.
You wanna pause there?
I do. Thank you.
Any further comments from code enforcement on any of those items?
The only thing, conversation with Craig, and I can't, again, can't speak for him. You're right. The driveway, I think he looked at it as a principal use for the city of Concord. I know the state had a driveway permit issued. I don't think it included the bridge. You can talk about that, but the bridge was never permitted to the state or us that I, that we can find. So he was always restricting the driveway to the Concord property only, not accessing Pembroke. That's all I can offer you there.
Okay, thank you. So what I'm hearing then, if I'm correctly understanding you, is that the driveway is not a principal use, and you're relying on the Huckleberry case as a close analogy to the situation that we're looking at here.
Mr. Chairman, I was involved in the Huckleberry case. It's the exact same situation.
It's closer than I said. Thank you, Councilman.
No problem.
Okay, so that, do I have that correct?
You have it correct, yes.
Okay. All right. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, start with Laura Scott.
Regardless of the Huckleberry...
Much as you hate gravel pits, we're on asphalt.
I know, God, I know. We're on to asphalt, which is more interesting to me. But regardless of the Huckleberry case, my opinion is because we have already decided that the driveway is, is there based on our last decision, I see no difference between using a driveway for gravel and using a driveway for asphalt. So again, maybe we're covered both ways because of the Huckleberry case and that, but we've already decided the driveway is, is okay to be there and to haul gravel, and I see no difference between gravel and asphalt.
I mean, I, I don't think the use of a road is the use of the property. I don't think you can impute that manufacturing use to the road. I just don't think that makes any sense, whether you call it a road or a driveway. There is no manufacturing happening on the road. And I think that it is an accessory use. It's been, it's a legal non-conforming accessory use, and I agree, it's not. It's a, asphalt and gravel are essentially the same thing.
Enter.
Yeah, and I mean, in Craig's analysis, he, he doesn't really, as far as I can tell, parse out the different, you know, reasoning between the asphalt, the quote asphalt use and the gravel use. I mean, I think, I think even by Craig's own reasoning in the letter, they kinda write, if, if, if he's wrong about the gravel, then the asphalt kinda follows that they can use it for the asphalt. So I, I agree.
Me too. I think the Huckleberry case is quite persuasive. There was a, they simply said a driveway is a driveway, that's it. And actually, I don't believe there's anything in the ordinance that says that a driveway on your land can't go anywhere you want as long as it doesn't violate the setbacks.
Right.
And doesn't violate the coverage, lack coverage requirements. You can put a driveway however you like. And they're essentially in that situation, I think, here. So I'm, I'm persuaded that if, if Craig's decision is underpinned by the idea that this is a principal use, then his decision is a mistake. Anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to overturn Mr. Walker's decision that the driveway cannot be used for the asphalt plant purposes.
Would anyone like to second that?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The vote is unanimous. The decision is overturned.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to withdraw the two applications for variances at this time.
We're delighted to...
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't want your paper back.
Do you want it all back?
It's more interesting than I said. Our secretary said, "Do not bring it back." Thank you. With that, I'll say good night, because there's no reason for me to hang around.
You're not having fun?
The church.
But the next case I cannot sit on. And I wasn't here for the last one, so I can't vote on the minutes. So I just need your paternity. We'll leave your mess right here. So with your permission, ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna scurry out the door.
Have a good night.
Have a good night. Thanks, everybody.
See you next month.
It was really interesting.
Yeah, it was.
It's always fun trying to find those files for gravel pits. It's like scraps of paper and...
And you can never find the letter they were required to submit.
It says Hershey's chocolate on the other side.
Seriously. Yeah.
Okay. Call the case, Nick.
Oh, well, I'm just trying to get caught up on something else.
All right. So our next case tonight is case fifty-seven, twenty-one, twenty-two Church Street LLC. This is a recess case. I'm not gonna read the, all the variance requests, since those are already entered into the minutes. So I guess I'd need a motion to open the case.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Case has been reopened. At this point, I guess we don't take any new testimony from the audience, since we've already done that. Is that correct? We're just continuing discussion?
Did we close the public hearing?
I thought we recessed it because we wanted to make sure people had the opportunity to bring more information back, because it should be in the minutes. But we recessed it to get...
Do we have the minutes here?
Yeah, I do. A motion to recess the case to the November third, twenty-twenty-one meeting was made by Monahan, seconded by Scott. Inspector Morgan amended the motion, asking the city attorney to weigh in on whether the variance approval for reduced parking at one-thirty-five North State Street is relevant to the variance. Both Monahan and Scott agree to the amendment. The motion passed by unanimous vote.
Did we close the hearing, though, beforehand?
Minutes don't say. There was a decision.
I don't think we did.
Hold on, winners.
Make that clear.
You're supposed to know.
Without, I mean, I can't recall what we, what we said, but my feeling was that there, there was that letter from Craig that was kinda sprung on them, and we...
They wanted a chance to talk.
They should have a chance to...
I think I should have a chance to speak to it.
To speak to it. Because it doesn't, it's not new factual testimony, at least there, yeah.
Well, we can always open it back up.
Yeah, I think we should open it back up.
Won't you come on back up?
It's closed, you'd have to re-notice it. But I don't think we closed it.
I don't think we closed it. I think they hadn't, they had just gotten the letter, so...
I'll remind you that you, you were sworn in already, but I think just for the clerk to have you sign, sign in, please. But then, again, just identify yourselves again as you testify.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. That was a long one just now. I'm sure you're very tired. The last thing you want is to hear another lawyer talk a lot, so I'll keep my remarks as brief as possible. I'm Peter Rimsey. I'm an attorney at the law firm, Maslow Wayne Hollis, and we represent the applicant. Sitting next to me is Fred Potter, the principal of the applicant in this particular application. This afternoon, I was able to finally collect all the information needed to put together, you know, a short letter that responded to Mr. Walker's communication.
Thank you.
All right, that answers my question. I've got extra copies if they didn't make it to you yet.
Thank you very much.
And I don't want to abuse the board's granting us the right to, to, to speak again tonight, so I won't go over all of the issues again that I, we discussed the last meeting regarding the, the application. I just mentioned, we have some, you know, at the last meeting, we had not yet received the landscaping renderings from our landscape consultant. Those did come in, and so I submitted those today. So you can take a look at the renderings of what the street state will look like, and if you happen to have the original application review, there are photos of the properties as they now exist attached to the application, you can compare. And I think the primary difference you'll, you'll pick up very quickly is, right now, there are several of the parking spaces really basically back up right onto the street. There's no screening, no buffering, and the new renderings show that the, how, how the proposed new parking lot would be screened from, from view from the street. And we also had another abutter support letter that we submitted. But the primary reason I want to, to use my time today and address the letters, just to, to address the, the comments in the Walker letter, and I think it just generally, Mr. Walker raised the, the concern of whether or not there were representations made in prior hearings relative to the one-thirty-five North State Street property, which is the location of the former governor's mansion, the carriage house, relative to parking that could be relevant to this application. And keeping my, my comments as short as possible, I think the first thing is, we reviewed the records, you know, the, the, the application process for the redevelopment of the church site that became Rollins Court, and then the governor's mansion site, really spanned a period of, you know, two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty. Mr. Charleyan handled the early years of those applications. Several of his hearings involved parking. Then last year, we appeared at, it's funny, I pulled up the calendar and said, "How come I remember that we appeared last year, in two thousand twenty? We couldn't have appeared because of COVID." And then it was, it was like the week before the world shut down. It was probably the last hearing you folks had in, in person. And we did, you know, make presentations last year, but I think the most important thing is, you know, there, there's nothing in the record that indicates the applicant made any kind of irrevocable binding promises, there would never be parking. If anything, I know he's not here to say I'm a liar, but he talked to Mr. Potter, and Mr. Potter, you know, has told me that Craig acknowledged to Fred, "Yes, Fred, I remember. I know you made, you know, when you made your comments, you said there may be events, there may be times when you have excess parking that won't fit on the site and will go onto the street." And so, you know, I, I thought it was very important, because at the last meeting, we ended with what I felt was a very uncomfortable feeling that the board was beginning to question the integrity of the process of the applicants. And I want to be very sure that, you know, that, that is not the case, that, that didn't happen. But, but more importantly, you know, you know, there's no question that if a board imposes conditions on a, on a variant, the applicant's bound by those, you know? And so if we were an applicant, the applicant had said, you know, "I promise I will do," and either that's in your decision or is embodied in the record, you know, would be binding on them, until something changed. But as you folks know, or this project's a great indication, since variances were amended two or three different times, you know, an applicant always has the right to come back to this board and say, "Circumstances have changed. I need different relief. Something came up. Something changed." And so the implication in Mr. Walker's letter that whatever was said in connection with the Mans and Carriage House property irrevocably prevents the applicant from proceeding with this particular application, just wasn't valid, it isn't supported by the law. You know, the applicant on this property, you know, has the right to come in. You know, if it were the owner of one-thirty-five, they could come in and look for the release. And in this case, I think I'd just make the point again that, you know, the, the owner of the carriage house and the mansion property has existing permits. The property's been renovated. The property's up and running. It exists. And what we have is here, somebody who is proactively saying, you know, "There might be problems in this neighborhood going down the road, and I want to do something to ameliorate those potential problems in advance." You know, I don't want to let a problem arise and then have to deal with it. And so the request here is really to address a potential issue and not, and not to, in any way, you know, certainly not in any way to avoid the, the, the prior variances they hold, or, or to... you know, certainly not in any way to avoid the prior variances they hold, or to not follow the unpromises they made in prior hearings. And I think, given how tired you all are, I think that's probably enough said. You know, my letter summarizes what I just said for you. You know, Fred, I don't know that you have anything to add to it, but you...
Major, sir, I want to thank you for letting us come back. I appreciate, when we saw what was developing here, we said, "Take all the time we need." I'm confident in the record. So thank you for allowing me this. I also want to thank Craig publicly, because he did meet with me. He did confirm he did not intend to suggest that anybody was hiding the ball.
And he reached out to me to say that same thing, because I think I was the one who had made the comment.
Oh, thank you.
So he did. He reached out to me and said, "That is not at all what I meant."
So the other thing is, I really see this as a benefit to the property that's before you. We've got six driveways where people have to drive out onto the street. They're almost parked on the street. There's no way for those... For the parking, as it currently exists, to serve the neighborhood well. I see this as a significant betterment for these very properties, and I don't see how we can do it. And I know economically, this is $100,000 plus to fix this parking problem. There's no way to do this without getting some support from the 135, which can help make this happen. So I really appreciate your allowing the testimony. And on a personal side, I was miserable, because I thought, "What is this?" And I read the same inferences. Craig assured me he did not intend that. He fired that off, because he ran out of time. He didn't research, couldn't research the records. So thank you for allowing this. And I appreciate your taking the time.
Can you pull up the aerial view, so we can see all the whole area that we're talking about? Thank you. Thanks.
That's not right. Keep going. Keep going, yep.
Yeah, there we go.
Yeah. Yeah, so this is the 2022 property, and this is the 26 property. So it's these two lots that would be combined, and then the parking area would be situated here, and these spaces here that now just back out onto the road will be discontinued, and this driveway here will likewise be discontinued, and access will come through the parking lot.
Thank you.
No problem. Any other questions?
Any other questions? For Mr. Potter, Mr. Ince? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
At this point, I don't seek any comments from the audience, like, because we already did that. Or do we?
I would.
They're sitting there. If they have something to say, let's hear it.
We do have also a letter from Underwater.
Okay. Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor of the application? And then I'll ask for anyone who wants to speak against the application.
Thank you.
So make sure you sign in.
I'm already sworn in from the last time, I assume? I spoke last time, so...
Yes, just tell us your name.
James Doherty.
All right, Mr. Doherty, what would you like us to know?
So, in my last testimony, I was sort of ambivalent about the situation. I've given it a little more thought. I was actually provided by Mr. Potter and Mr. Miller, the landscape plans, which I don't think you've actually shown. So there's definitely some pros and cons about the whole situation. I mean, it is a parking lot in a residential neighborhood, which I know certain people have some concerns about. There are some... The benefits to me, it's going to change the way that traffic is flowing right now. If people continue to park on the street, especially if there's overflow parking from 135 used that street, it's going to continue up. Now, I live in the property at the very top to the west of 26 Church Street, so my property is 26. We share the fence that runs down between that, between the properties. So I can see a little bit more traffic than traveling up past my house, so selfishly, if there's a parking lot there and people are turning around and going back down the street, it certainly benefits me. And on the other side of it, I can't see the parking lot from my house, so as far as that goes, it's not a...
Do you want to see the landscaping plans that were just submitted to us?
I have seen them, yes. So I don't know if everybody has, but in my opinion, the landscape plans that are there look better than what's there now, even though it is a parking lot. It is well shielded. And in the defense of Mr. Potter and all the work that he's done in around the neighborhood, between the Governor's Center, his property is on Franklin and the corner of North State, he's done nothing but better the look of the neighborhood. So I, you know, I think it's in the best interest of the neighborhood to allow the parking lot to go forward, to allow that, you know, it should minimize hopefully some traffic, some traffic. I don't think it's... I mean, I don't think it's necessarily going to bring more traffic to the area, because those cars are already going to be parked on the street anyway. And overall, I think it will just... It will look better. Everything he's done has made everything look better now, so... But I'll have to say a word.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone who'd like to speak against the application?
Did we ever get an opinion from the attorney?
Yes, but it's privileged.
So in terms of relevance, it would just be pertinent to you guys?
Yes.
Got it.
Did you testify the previous?
Yes, I did.
You both did. So just again, state your name, so we know who you are.
Lindsay Harrington.
And Natalie Harrington, 19 Church Street.
So Mr. Potter and Mr. Miller dropped off the renderings yesterday, but before that, we just wanted to share the view from our house, just because we kind of talked about that perspective the last time we were here. So...
And you're at 19 Church Street, right across the street.
Correct, yep. I can't really tell from... So I guess, based on the last meeting, there are questions that remain for us about hardship, improving the hardship of the first phase and the second phase differently. But generally, our biggest concerns are around the character of the neighborhood and what this will do to it. So such a large parking lot would alter the essential character of the neighborhood and conflicts with the explicit and implicit purpose of the ordinance, which is to maintain a residential neighborhood. And I can appreciate the benefit this would have to Mr. Potter's development of the neighborhood, and by all accounts, I agree what he has done in the neighborhood has been wonderful. It's beautiful. He does a really nice job. But I don't believe that that outweighs the possible harm and detrimental impact that that could have to our property value in terms of us just living across the street from a parking lot. I know that we searched long and hard to find a house in Concord, and we were excited to find the neighborhood that we did, in that it's so close to downtown, but it's also a very quiet street situation next to Old North Cemetery. Currently, it's generally used by residents and also, you know, anybody who's just kind of cutting through to get to the other side streets. So at this point in time, there's not a ton of commercial traffic in terms of overflow from 135. I am concerned that it will kind of further encroach into the neighborhood if that parking lot is used for those purposes. And at the last meeting, the board asked how many spots would be needed, and Mr. Hall shared that it would be ten for the residential use. So over half of what this lot would hold generally would be commercial traffic. I mean, I understand it's not a public lot, but it would be suited for the commercial purposes. We also just have some safety concerns about the increased traffic. It's a narrow street. Generally, people park on one side of it, and we just, as a general principle, don't park on the other side, because you really can't get up and down the street. It's a two-way street. It's so narrow, sometimes I question why it's not a one-way street. So just that increased traffic is just a concern for us, especially considering our... The entrance to our driveway would be directly across from the entrance to this parking lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions of our two testifiers now? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition of the request? Please step forward.
I did not speak at the... I did not attend the last...
So what I'm going to do is just swear you in. Just want to tell truth, all truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could just write down your name and also state your name for the record.
My name is Matthew Visonazzo. I live at 21 Church Street.
And just for the record, we also have submitted your letter from you and Emma.
Yes, that's my wife.
We have that for the record.
So I want to clarify, I'm not speaking in opposition to the development. I think I echo the sentiments that the developments in the neighborhood have been positive by Mr. Potter in the past, but I wanted to identify myself as the author of the letter and state my appearance. And so I outlined some concerns that we have. We want to maintain a residential character for the street, and I want that to be considered. And but like I said, overall, we've been happy with the developments in the neighborhood, so I just want all the concerns that I expressed in the letter to be considered, and...
Do you want to touch on those concerns?
The concerns, some related to traffic increase. I'm not sure if there's been any conclusion either way, whether it would increase or decrease traffic, through traffic. I have two small children, so that's a concern for us. But generally, the appearance... So I've just seen the renderings now, and it's still digesting, I suppose, but I don't think they look... Like I said, I think the developments that have taken place in the neighborhood have been positive so far, but we don't want to lose a residential character to Church Street. And so we also don't want to lose our view of the Old North Cemetery, which is directly across from our house at 21. And so I understand that there'll be some shielding from the road, but I express that as a concern, because the cemetery is a draw for us, and it's an attractive piece of history there on the street.
Where are you on that map?
Sure.
And then also, in your letter, you pointed out that there was a narrow street.
It is a narrow street, yeah.
Can you show me where the narrow street is? Were you talking about the street itself?
Church Street.
Well, because you said there was a narrow street directly across the entrance to the parking.
We're directly across. So we're here at... This is 21. That's us. That's 19, 21. This is 26 and 20, 22.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none? Anybody else who'd like to speak, either in favor or in opposition? Code enforcement, any comments?
When you need to speak to the number of driveways, there was a little bit of confusion with the, you know, looking to cut down. They wanted to maintain three driveways, but I think what it was, was what they wanted to do, the first part merge, and then it was going to be cut down to one driveway. So I just wanted to make sure that we mentioned that. I think we should have it straightened out at this point.
All right. Anything else? And with that, I'll declare the hearing closed.
Oh, am I going first? Okay. So I don't have any problems with request number one and two, which is to permit the merged properties, the two-unit condominium or the three driveways, because there is case law that says that basically if you're taking something and you're not doing anything to it, you're just changing the form of ownership to condominium, you really can't deny that. So I don't have any problem with request number one and number two. I have a problem with the commercial parking lot in the residential neighborhood. I don't think there's a hardship. I think the hardship argument that has been made is that it would be a really good place for this, which is great, but the Supreme Court has held that's not a hardship. I think it does have the potential to alter the character of the neighborhood. It's a small, close-knit residential neighborhood, and I think putting a commercial parking lot in the middle of it would violate both the spirit of the ordinance and the purpose and intent of the ordinance. I think it could very well have a diminution of property values, and I just think the gain to the applicant is not outweighed by the loss to the public, so I would have a problem with that one. The lot coverage one, 52% versus 50%, you know, I don't think there's a real issue granting that one either, but I'm not sure they need that one if we deny the other one. So that's sort of how I feel on them.
Andrew.
Yeah, I agree. You know, and I do say, even without the clarifications, I, you know, I didn't doubt the good faith or integrity of Mr. Potter. I think, you know, he's been in front of us a number of times, and he's demonstrated a lot of outstanding work for the community. So that, you know, I don't think Craig's letter had that much impact, but I do think this is a situation where it's a transitional neighborhood. It's right on the cusp of, you know, more commercial activity, but in that tucked-back, you know, as you get into the side streets, it really is residential. And I do think that that is the purpose of a residential district, is to, you know, prevent the commercial activity from kind of gradually migrating over, which is, you know, obviously you've got North State Street, which is a heavily trafficked area, but then the side streets, the purpose of the zone there is for them to maintain their quiet character. And I... We don't know exactly what, you know, if there will be extra traffic, but there's certainly the high potential for that, and there is also the aesthetic of it. So I do think it would change the character, and that outweighs any hardship, which I'm not sure if there is any.
I agree. The two, first two variances about merging the lots, again, it's just about ownership. So that's been proven multiple times, that you can't say no to that. I do agree that basically creating a commercial use for an off-site property is creating its own hardship. It's not the uniqueness of the land. It's not even for the owners of these two parcels. So I would have a hard time supporting that, so...
And I do think that it would change the character of the neighborhood somewhat. So why don't we take the requests one at a time?
Sure. I'd make a motion to approve article... The variances for articles 28, 2, 4H and 28, 7, 8B.
Or numbers one and two on...
Or one and two, yeah. Being fancy there, but for one and two. For the reasons stated.
Motion's been made and seconded.
I second it.
Although it does say you... Although it does say three driveways.
No, no, that's...
We did hear testimony that it would be merged into one driveway. Is that correct?
No, that's...
With phase two.
If they do phase two. So I'm okay with leaving the existing driveways for number one and two.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No nays? Motion passes four to one, four to zero for items one and two.
Request number three, I would make a motion to deny request number three on the basis that there is no unnecessary hardship, that it would violate the spirit of the ordinance, that it would be contrary to the public interest, that it would diminish surrounding property values, and that substantial justice would not be done for the reasons I stated earlier. Do you mean that for three, four, five and six? Are you doing those? Oh. I mean that for three. I mean that just for three. Okay. Oh, are you looking at the hearing notice, number three, or are you looking at the letter number... You're looking at... I'm looking at the letter number three. Okay. I'm sorry. I was looking at the hearing notice. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. This is the use variance. So, yeah, if you look at...
Which number is it on the...
Hang on.
Let's go with the agenda.
Yes, you use the agenda. Number four. It's number four. We skipped number three. We did skip number three.
Number three is lot coverage of...
We just did one and two. We approved one and two on the agenda.
So now we're talking about allowing maximum lot coverage of 52%, where maximum lot coverage of 50% is allowed.
So let's back up. Are we going to take care of number four first, seeing how Laura's already made a motion for it, and then go back to number three? Or are you going to just...
We can do that.
Because we've already got all of that written up. Because we've already got all of that written up. Number four on the agenda.
All right.
Yeah.
The clerk has spoken.
Yeah. A lot.
So we're on item four.
On the agenda.
On the agenda.
I will second that, thank you.
Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded to deny, item four. All in favor of denial, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's been denied, zero to four, zero to four, denied. Let's go back to number three, lot coverage, 52% where maximum coverage of 50% is allowed.
I mean, it's pretty minor, but I think because the basis for the maximum lot coverage is to support this additional use, that I'm disinclined to agree with, I'm going to move to deny three as well. Because there's no There's no hardship, even for such a, you know, minor additional, even for going 2% over in this case, because of the reason why they want it.
Any second?
I'll second that.
Members of board, to save your time, you know, since the proposal for the establishing the parking lot was denied, these other three variances all key off of it, and my client has indicated he's willing to withdraw it, so that you don't have to act on those other requests.
Even on the drainage issue one?
Yeah, that was just for
Yeah.
That versus the parking lot.
We were using an alternative surface to address drainage, and that goes away too, so there'll have to be a different plan based on what you know with parking.
Okay.
So the minutes, so we'll recognize the fact that we'll withdraw in item three, five and six. So no further action required by the members of the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last item is, last minutes? Did we approve the November 3rd minutes? So we need to look at the November 3rd minutes. We also need to look at
Today's November 3rd.
Today's November 3rd.
I mean, October
I'm leaving them here. Leaving them here. The only thing I'm taking with me is Jim's email.
It was a war from six o'clock yesterday morning till nine o'clock last night, so I didn't get much sleep.
I brought it with me.
So, hold on. I'll tell you who was here. So on October 6th, Laura Scott, Andrew Winters, and Laura, yeah, the three of you can make a motion on the November, October 6 minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 And then the next set of minutes.
13?
Yeah, but Laura and Andrew only, and me.
Oh, and you?
No, Laura Junior.
The non-Laura, the non-lawyer Laura.
One and two.
The less bossy of the Lauras.
So I guess the two of you
Barely ever been called
You and Andrew will have to make the motion and second it.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the October 16th minutes.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both sets of minutes have been passed.
Motion for adjourned?
Motion
Yes, yes.
That's been made and seconded.
By who and who? You guys go too fast.
Pick some, Laura Senior made the motion.
I don't like that one.
I know.